David?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, good morning. Want to welcome everybody here from Mahoney County Commissioners Hearing Room. This is our forty-first board meeting of the year. It's Thursday, October twenty-first at approximately ten oh one AM. And before we get into public comments, we have a presentation that we would like to do on behalf of the ABC Water District in Boardman Township, who all three trustees are here, and I see their administrator, Jason Laurie. Nice to have you here. The commissioners are proud, and we're very happy to be able to enter in and help Boardman Township with the flooding. This is the Forest Lawn Sanitary Sewer Park, and we will be helping you with money towards this to help alleviate flooding for around fourteen hundred homes. And the drawings and the architectural designs that you have put together looks like it's going to be something fantastic. I know that flooding has been an ongoing issue in Boardman as well as the commissioners here. So with that being said, if you would like to make some comments, any trustees or Jason? Whoever, this is all of you.
On behalf of all of us, first thing I want to do is say thank you for your participation. This is a wonderful project. It's truly a collaboration of the trustees, ABC Water District, county commissioners, the state has volunteered, has come up with dollars through the state capital budget, looking to come up with more. We're getting some dollars hopefully from the Clean Water through N-Rac. So this is a great thing. It's about a three million dollar project. But Anthony, as you said, it's going to hopefully solve the problems of fourteen hundred homes, which is huge. And it's also going to create a beautiful park-like setting for the neighborhood to enjoy for years to come. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Larry, Brad, or Jason?
No, exactly these words here. Jason might want to talk a little bit about how much water we retain.
Sure. This park, like I said, once in a generational project, I mentioned to many of you before. We are daylighting a stream that has been piped in with two twin sixty-inch pipes. So the amount of water this will end up holding would be the equivalent to a football field with nine feet of water on top.
Wow.
We couldn't get it at any other site in town. There's not another location that has a piped-in stream like this. So it's a massive help to the Stormwater District of the township and the community. It's just, it's just amazing. So thank you so much for the support on this. It's just going to make a world difference.
And how you work well with the school board too. I mean, they were your partner as well. That was phenomenal.
Couldn't do it without them. Couldn't do it without them. So it's, it was the perfect site that hit all the checkboxes.
Not often can you find, there's a fourteen acres, fourteen acres, you know, in developed part of Warbin. But I think not only will it retain water, but it'll, it'll be an asset when we put the little walking trail around it for that community that lives in that area of North Warbin. So I think that they will appreciate the.
I'll drive up.
There you go.
Yeah.
And commissioners, if I could also just thank you all, and I think it shows again the collaboration. We mentioned working with the school board, and you know, it's all about the residents who live in the community. But also, I have to just, even above and beyond what you are all doing for Warbin Township today. I want to thank you for your leadership, and Audrey and I've been very involved in Anna. But your leadership and how you've been really good stewards of these funds and really understanding and having a great concept of what the needs are in this community. There's so many other communities that are out there that can't figure out how to do this, and you've all figured it out. And you have your, your, your hands on the pulse of what the needs are in this community. I want to thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I, I, my heart goes out to you guys for, you know, putting together the Stormwater Project. You know, I know how difficult it is and how difficult it has been. You know, you, everybody needs their problem fixed today, you know, and to try and establish a plan and an approach to go after the biggest impact, you know, for the most people to try and assist them with their flooding problems, you know, and then to be able to find land available. You know, we, we all know how densely populated Boardman is from a residential and a commercial standpoint, and how difficult it's been to try and get to this point. And we're really proud to be able to assist Boardman with the water alleviation projects that you've put together. So, I mean, this is something that, like you said, that you don't ever get an opportunity to impact so many homes with so much acreage in such a populated area. And working with the school board, it shows your collaboration within your own community. And we're really happy to be able to direct funds to this project that will help so many people that have been impacted. So, you know, it's good to work together, and you're right, it's just what cooperation is all about, you know. And I think that, you know, like Carol says all the time, that we have a great team that works together. And, you know, we try to find projects that will impact, you know, the county as a whole in the biggest way. And this is definitely one of them we're proud to participate with. So thank you. So.
Well, I would, I would kind of reiterate both of those comments, but you, you could see the change all over Mahoney County in the teamwork that's there on, on behalf of the trustees, whether it's the trustees, the cities, the mayors. We have a team in Mahoney County, which is one big ball, and it involves all of us. We all have to sit at that table, find out ways to work together and make it work. I mean, sometimes it will, sometimes it will not. This time it did. And I'm just, I'm a big component of corridors. I really am. Anything coming into Boardman or going into Youngstown or Camel or Struthers, wherever it is, you need to have the corridors look the best they could look. And when this project is done, not only will the, the, the issues be resolved to a degree, you'll have a beautiful park across the way, which brings you right into the corridor with mall development. I mean, you couldn't ask for a better time that, that we all got together and, and worked as a team. So I'm, I'm happy about that. It's taken a long time for Dave, Anthony, myself, and everybody to get on the same, on the same team. So we are on that. I continually say that everywhere I go. I know people get sick of it. But I do say that because without that, it doesn't work. So good luck.
Thank you.
And I'm waiting for the walking check.
There you go.
Is it going to be a mile or half a mile?
You go around once, it's one third mile. So three, three laps.
Three laps. Well, gentlemen, before we present the check, I think you all should be able to take a bow for how aggressively you have attacked flooding in Boardman. I know every time it rains, your phones ring off the wall, and you're owed a debt of gratitude how you three trustees and Jason have attacked the flooding issues in Boardman because it's a, it's a tough time.
It's a process. This is one step.
Yep. We have a beautiful check for you that we will take back when you leave.
One million. Will that work?
I just, I just sometimes gets the decimal point the wrong place. It's a hundred dollars. Is that okay?
Every little bit helps, I guess.
Does that fit into the ATM deposit?
Yes, it will. Okay, are you ready?
Drumroll. That's a lot. Thank you. Absolutely.
Come on, Jason.
Oh, I'm taking pictures, sorry.
Come on in here.
Come on in, Jason.
Absolutely.
Couple of them, make sure. Okay. All righty.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
We know you guys have a meeting due to this morning or something.
Yes. We can take this.
Yeah, yeah. Marcus Real Elementary School.
And Anna's on there to say. Anna's on there. Wave Anna.
Anna, thank you. Pat Genetti, thank you for your assistance.
Yes.
Audrey?
See you guys.
See you guys. I'm going to open it up. Okay, public comments. Your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
My name is Edna Gillam. I live at one zero two zero zero Youngstown Salem Road, Salem, Ohio, Green Township. I have a problem. Now, since it's been my problem, I'm now going to make it everybody else's problem. I have a land I, I rent for almost fourteen years, and I've been in this house with my children and my grandchildren. The neighbor to the left of me, there's photographs, dug a sixty-foot trench tied in his downspouts to this pipe. So when it rains, the water actually runs so hard it shoots up into the air. The overflow comes into my yard. The neighbor to the right of me, there's photographs there, his downspouts in the front of the house go into a pipe underneath his garage and out the back of the, of the house. In the back, it comes down the back of the house into a pipe and into the yard. Now, my landlord has done some things that have not been good. He was supposed to fix the septic system, which he finally did. I mean, he took twenty years, and we didn't know about a lot of this stuff. But he did fix it. The man to the right of me, the first time we meet these people, he walks over with a gun on his hip and says, "I have a concealed carry. I know how to use it, and I'm from Youngstown." Well, I grew up near the Pied Street Market, but the rules, Anthony could tell you, the rules are different out in the country. They will shoot you first and then ask questions. Now, this guy every week is calling the county health department. I'm destroying the quality of his life. He took my landlord to court. Now, my landlord says if I cooperate, I'm getting evicted. The health department threatens me with bullying me, saying if I don't cooperate, I'm going to get evicted in their condemning house. I told the money manager, I take my money cash to the money manager with my own receipt book. I've done it for years. So this way, there is a record of what I paid every month. I did repairs to the property. I take care of my business. I mind my business. But if you make it my business, Anthony could tell you, we're going to be here, and I'm not playing. Now, I've been, Monday, a man came to my house and handed my grandson a letter saying, "It is a mandatory inspection. We're going to do this, this, and this." Well, guess what? God gave me the right to breathe, pay my taxes, and die. Kiss off. I mean, I can't make it any plainer than that. But when I told the county health department, "Did you look over there? Did you look over there?" No, no. They want my landlord. The other thing my landlord did for twenty years is he's claimed the Homestead Act. The Homestead Act says if you're disabled or if you're sixty-five, you get a cut in your taxes. He's forty-two.
Not if you don't live there.
And he hasn't lived there in twenty years, twenty years. So the auditor's office calls me last year and says, "Does he live with you?" "No." "Do you live with him?" "No." "Do you know where he lives?" "It's on the card for your office." This man must owe this county hundreds of thousands of dollars in taxes that he got illegally. I mean, that's my point of view. So here's the thing I'm telling all of you, and I've told the other people involved, I'm leaving. I'm packing. They're at my house right now. My other kids are at my house. We're packing. We're leaving the county. We're, we're leaving the state.
Twenty more seconds.
But I'm set up with being harassed and threatened. I won't do it. You could come on Monday. I'll be sitting in the driveway. I'm not. I'm not. I told them evict me. It will take ninety days. That's what the lawyer told me yesterday morning, ninety days. But I'll be out there. But my salary's, my kids are gone. We're done. We're done playing.
Thank you, Edna.
I just need the photos back when you're done, please.
Here they are.
Thank you.
I'll bring them to you.
Oh, that's all right.
Anyone else? Public comments? Mr. Kerrigan? Yes, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity. I just wanted to come by and real quickly give you an oral update of how we're spending your money. It's been a great addition to our ability to serve people in our county. And we've had a variety of classes. I know your focus is on digital literacy classes. I'll just real quickly, we've had social media for small businesses classes, making mobile multimedia for, for people. Several Zoom classes, basic stuff that people don't know how to use, Bible apps for seniors, keeping safe cyberspace. We had a three-day accounting class for, for anybody, mainly for small businesses. These are all free, thanks to your generosity. We had three classes where an accountant taught people how to put bookkeeping practices and using free software. We had a telehealth with people from Mercy Health. We've had several introductory classes that are really doing better than we thought. And we get a lot of people that were serving for emergency broadband benefit. We've had over four hundred people with help. And with this group of people, now we're getting people, now how do I use my computer? And I've got good service other than just on my phone, so we're teaching that. We're also going to start teaching shortly at OCA. We're going to do it bilingual classes. So we have, again, we're doing it for free. Just do it for people that are there, and try to get people that may be out of the mix, you know, that don't have the opportunities. We're teaching them. We also have, I mean, we have other classes too, like Microsoft Word, all these introductory classes. We're getting the word out. Sometimes the attendance is low, but we're, we're doing a better job of that. We also have several other projects. And all, again, although the focus of the grant was for the digital literacy portion of it, that I think is all related. So we are expanding into Trumbull County, a partnership with Trumbull New Partners, Trumbull Neighborhood Partners. We're going to do this EBB program, which, if you know, remember, is fifty dollars off your internet for, for people that, that are income qualified, which is a tremendous program. Also partnering with Oh Wow to teach their, their student population how to use three D printers. We take our three D printers down and work with them, and we're going to have a mutual, you know, going forward, we have several classes that we're going to do with them. Then we also have a Youngstown Community School. We have a project there that we're going to have forty students. We're going to teach how to use these Raspberry Pis. Raspberry Pi is how you build a computer. Raspberry Pi is about the size of your cellphone. You get a monitor, keyboard, mouse. We're talking fourth, fifth, sixth.
It's not the kind of Raspberry Pi me and Anna.
I know. I saw that, yeah.
Ice cream, ice cream on.
No, but this Raspberry Pi, S P I, is, is teaches kids how to build their own computers out of programs. And then when they're done, they walk away with, with the computer.
We all should.
We should come to that.
Yeah, I mean, it, it kind of brings tears to my eyes when I see these fourth graders still.
Wow.
So this is Youngstown Community School taking this up because, yeah, some of our money is we pay for our instructors, but the cost of the equipment gets more prices, so sometimes people aren't too interested in that. Let's see, and we're starting a partnership going forward with Boys Growth Club to start teaching them in both the Raspberry Pi and some of the other classes. They're a natural partner. We just haven't connected to them very well. So we're doing all of that, and we're continuing to, you know, serve on committees and work to bring broadband in through East Gate. We're, we're partners with East Gate Council Governments, and we're kind of their boots on the ground. They're the infrastructure people, the engineers, you know, and that, they do the towers and, you know, the pipelines.
Could I ask a question? Did, did they forward you any, any financial support for your programs?
No.
East Gate did not.
But they are.
They have, they received a large grant for their broadband. Is that correct?
Well, they, they received a large grant for the broadband study. And that was two hundred thousand dollars they did for study. And that's kind of where they brought me in because I knew all the people that are doing it statewide and regionally. And so I kind of helped move that along, and we're an integral part of their study. I mean, their study is two hundred and fifty pages long. And we're prominently mixed, you know, in that. If you see a synopsis, maybe I'll forward you a synopsis of what they're doing. They match to the collaborative, and I'm very proud of that, you know, repeatedly because, you know, we are, you know, they're boots on the ground. They can do all the, the infrastructure, but how they're going to get people to take advantage of it, that's what we do. And we do it better than.
Now, once they're done with that, maybe they'll get a port of some capital funds for the actual.
And they're already talking about that, that they want to supply for money. And one of the things that they want to do, by the way, just keep in the back of your head, is they want to establish neighborhood centers that are digital-based, kind of replicating what we do, even making it more on the streets, you know, to something where we're in Austin town. They have a three-county area, so they'd like to do something more. And that's why we're going with T and P. But I have to be able to get something that extends what we do so people can actually walk in. And we, we make cheap computers. You can get a refurbished computer for thirty-nine dollars. You can get, depending on the plan you're going through and your, and your qualifications. But, so we do all of those things, and they want to have other people. And I also want to point out, and shout out to Sarah Lyons, a member of my boards, and, and she's, she's a tremendous asset to us and somebody that I, I feel that I can rely on, you know, as much as anybody on my boards.
Okay.
Any questions about that? Because I just wanted to give you an update, show, show our appreciation for what you do.
Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Kerrigan. How much outreach have you done in the townships? Out in the far-lying townships? Because this is the first time I've ever heard of this.
Right.
And there is poverty and a lot of elderly in the townships that sometimes are totally isolated and don't know how to use computers. I happen to live with, in a house full of people who, oh gee ma, let me do it for you. Now, teach me how to do it. I can do it myself. This is the first time. If you have a business card, I would love to share that information with a number of other seniors.
And, and, and get back to me, I'll give you my card, but I want you to get back with me with your information too because this is a big county, a big city, big county. I have two people, and, and we're doing a wide variety of things. And so we're kind of focused on the city, and now we're starting to expand, ready to teach these classes and get the exposure out. We're contacting the senior citizen centers.
But see, a lot of us who live in the townships, it's like Austintown has fairs and Warbin has fairs.
Sure.
But then the other townships, you know, North Jackson, Millburn, Vermin.
I understand that, and we've reached out to, to the trustees, tried to get them to do something. But, you know, there's only so much that you can do.
Oh, yeah.
So for example, just to give you an idea, you know, it, it all revolves around money as well. We just spent thirty thousand dollars promoting this emergency broadband benefit, saving money just in the city, because the city gave us money. I mean, you would think that everybody would know that. Everybody would line up. It's not. It's a very hard thing to get across. So, you know, any, any opportunity that we have, like for you, we would appreciate it. That would help us.
Anthony notes, I got a big mouth.
That's what I need. I need a lot of people.
There you go. That's perfect.
And then the Austintown Senior Center lets anyone come there. They have computer classes. You could go there and attend.
Thank you.
The Austintown Senior Center is probably the best.
You could join the Austintown Senior Center.
Yeah, they, they do, they do a great work.
Because I'm not in Green Township.
Yeah, you, it doesn't matter where you're. You're in Sebring?
No, no. Green Township.
It doesn't matter where you live. You could join the Austintown Senior Center.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Public comments? No? All right then. Need a motion approved previous minutes of board meeting number forty and approval bills for payment.
So.
Second. Rule call.
Commissioner Ditson?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficant?
Yes, journal entry number one.
Journal entry number one. Do I hear a motion?
Second. Rule call.
Commissioner Ditson?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agati? Commissioner? Remedy Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficant?
Yes. Okay, agreements, A, B, and C, facilities, purchasing, that would be Mr. Fortunato.
Good morning, everyone. This is an agreement with A and M Door and Supply, Inc. It's for replacement of exterior doors for a start. This resolves a safety and security issue to our door that's in the stairwell. And A and M was the lowest of three proposals up there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Jim. Sanitary, Mr. Genetti.
For our commissioners, letter C is an agreement with Austintown Lock and Key to replace door locks, handles, and panic bars at the garage doors on Industrial Road. The amount is two thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars, and these are non-general funds.
Okay. Come back to me. All right, B, Jimmy. I thought you did it. Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, that's all right.
This is an amendment to Paul Rattudy, Architect, our owner's representative advisor to the roofing of juvenile justice. What happened was that unforeseen situation where water penetrated into the gym floor. And this is to assist us to replace the gym floor as soon as possible, and him to oversee that it's being done correct, timely, within budget.
We thank you for, for that.
Sure.
Okay, motion.
Yeah, he did say that.
Motion approved number two, agreements A through C.
Second. Rule call.
Commissioner Ditson?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficant?
Yes, road closing, A and B.
Commissioners, letter A, we're going to close Western Reserve Road between Beloit-Snodes and Helsel Road on October twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth. These are for culvert replacements. And we need to amend journal entry twenty-one dash ten dash zero one seven to extend the road closing at Tippy Canoe Road until Friday, October twenty-ninth. That is also for multiple culvert replacements.
Very good. Thanks, Pat. Motion?
Motion approved number three, road closings, A and B.
Second. Rule call.
Commissioner Ditson?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficant?
Yes, resolutions?
Motion to approve resolutions, number one additions.
Second. Rule call.
Commissioner Ditson?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficant?
Yes. Resolutions A through F and letter A. Audrey?
Commissioners, this is a resolution to approve the agreement and addendums and expenditures with the following to assist with COVID nineteen public health and funded by ARPA in the following amounts. It's the Hope House Visitation Center for forty thousand, Mental Health and Recovery Board for fourteen thousand seven ninety-three, Valley Partners for one million, and ABC Water and Storm District for one million. And then Anna, she's on there. It's okay.
Yeah.
I wanted to say that the Mental Health and Recovery Board was an additional addendum for flying high. Once we got the equipment estimates in, it came in a little higher. Hope Visitation House, this is to help them get through the end of the year. They had some funding cuts, and this was something they really needed. And then the Valley Partners is for grants, the grants for funding.
Sean Curts? If you would, thank you.
No, he's not in.
I'm up next, but.
He's not.
You guys have a resolution for a lease in front of you?
No, no, we're not, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry. That's all right. That's okay. Anna?
Anna, what did you do?
I don't know. What did I do?
I don't know. I think I saw a cast on your arm, Anna.
Oh.
Were you doing something you weren't supposed to do?
No, I missed a step.
And I just went through everything with them to tell them what the various ones were for.
Great. Thank you.
And I heard you were golfing. You fell out of the golf cart. Is that true?
No, no, no. Not true. Do you have any other questions?
No.
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
Item, item B is a resolution approving the lease with Person, Person Centered Services, Inc., Active Day, Ohio, Inc., Active Day, Inc., and ADSC Holding, Inc. for real property at one fifty-three Javits Court pursuant to Ohio Vice Code three oh seven point oh nine A and three oh seven point ten A. I can say that our prosecutor's office worked very hard on this. That's why we have so many human aliases as on this, but Sean can speak on this.
Sure, Sean, welcome.
Thank you, Audrey. Good morning. So what we have here is a, as you know, most of you know anyhow, the, the federal government has mandated that county boards of vulnerable disabilities divest themselves from providing direct care services. So as a result, we have transitioned out of providing day services at our facilities. The one currently we're leasing here is the Javits Road in Austintown. What we did is we, we did a request for proposed qualifications and selected Active Day, which they're also known as, to provide the services that the board, county board, used to provide out there. So this is the lease for that, and even though we're no longer providing those operations, we pay match, a grant Medicaid waiver match to provide those services out there that Active Day will not be providing. We'll pay those services for those not on a waiver, and we'll pay the match for those that are on a waiver. Waiver is a, is a funding stream from the Medicaid system, and it allows county boards to pay about ten million dollars of Medicaid waiver match. And as a result, we'll leverage sixty-five million dollars of Medicaid waiver services into Mahoney County. It's a tremendous return on investments for.
Yeah, it is.
You know what? Do you, is this company out of Ohio?
So Active Day, they're, they're holding companies out of Delaware, obviously for tax purposes. They, uh, took over a company called PCS, Person Centered Services, was, uh, well-known throughout the state. They bought them out and they are operating as Active Day in Ohio.
Do they have other facilities in the state?
They have a lot of facilities throughout the state of Ohio as well.
Okay.
And this is what they do.
And this is what they do. Um, in addition, it's, it's a conglomerate. It's a very large company and they, they provide other services as well as, uh, adult day services to, uh, folks with developmental disabilities.
And this was a bid out service too, um, they put an RFP out for the service and, um.
Isn't this a shame when we have to outsource something that should be handled in government? As a part of something that we, I mean, I, I just, I'm not gonna speak on it because I can go on forever, so I'm not gonna do that. But I mean, when they're taking everything out of the hands of government, local governments like this that would be run by people that are vested in our community, that are here, that understand the people they're dealing with and the type of illnesses, whether mental or physical.
Absolutely.
I'll never understand that at all, ever.
The federal government thought it was a, uh, there's a perception of a, a conflict. They had a conflict-free management rule, federal government. And they thought it was a conflict that county boards who provide case services to folks with, uh, developmental disabilities and then also provide direct care services, they thought that was a conflict. So as a result, we had to divest ourselves out of the direct care services and how we've transitioned out of them. And, uh, we have transitioned all our day ser, adult day services, this is the last one.
Wow.
This is only a way to get privatized, privatize things that should not be.
Exactly.
In my opinion.
And some of the ancillary issues with that is now we're having a staffing shortage. So, um, providing those services, I mean, there's a shortage scrub.
Because the privatization doesn't provide a living wage for people to work there.
The county board provided that living wage with good benefits, you know, so.
You know, at, at the end of the day, Sean, and you know better than all of us up here. You know, you've lived it and you've, you, you've been part of the system, you know, so you know that, that some things government isn't intended to make dollars on the backs of people off of. You know, some things like student loans and things like taking care of disabled people is a responsibility of a community and a government. And when you turn it over to the private industry, that happens, th- this is exactly what happens. You know, you, you get private industry providing non-living wages, non-benefits. The corporations make the money and the people suffer because of the care that's provided. You know, the, the government entities did an amazing job, you know, providing for people that needed care and service and had disabilities and, and now, you know, we're just turning our backs on the people that need us the most.
You know, workforce, I mean, extraordinary parts of all the people that work for us.
Well, and it's just totally sad. I mean, I will never quit being on that Billy Paul, no, because it's just crazy.
And, and I just wanna make it clear too, I mean, because I know DD has a levy out there, there is no reduction in cost for DD.
Yeah.
You are having to pay waivers and stuff and so it's still coming out of the pocket of our tax dollars.
Right.
And so I just wanna make people aware, even though this service is going to a nonprofit, private nonprofit, you're still doing funding.
Man, they're second largest outside of payrolls, that's ten million dollars waiver match.
Yes.
Like I said, it leverages sixty-five million dollars in Mahoney County.
It does.
It's a tremendous return on investment for a grant.
Right.
Not only fifty-fifty is the best you can get, we're, we're getting eighty-three dollars out of every hundred. Get from the state.
And that's an outsourced, and that's an outsourced. So when you see that, when you see that type of money that's generated in big government, where like federal government or the state, in a private entity, I don't need to say anymore.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your great support, we much appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, letter C, Pat. Engineers.
Commissioners, letter C is a resolution of necessity to purchase a Case five twenty-one G front loader from Southeastern Equipment through the state. Uh, purchasing contract in the estimated amount of one hundred thirty-seven thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars eighty-five cents, non-general funds.
Okay. E and E, letter D, human resources, Karen?
Oh, good morning, Commissioners, Nancy, Audrey. That time of year again for open enrollment for healthcare benefits. Um, D is a resolution approving the life insurance for the county employees. And letter E is a resolution approving an agreement with an employee of Job and Family Services. Thank you.
And letter F, sanitary.
Commissioners, this is a resolution approving a partial discharge of a sanitary sewer easement on a property on South Avenue in Boardman Township where the sanitary sewer passes underneath a person's garage, we had a collapse, we're gonna reroute the sewer around the garage to save the structure.
Thank you very much, motion?
Motion approved number two, resolutions A through F.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Chafficanty?
Yes. And for the goodie order, the elected officials or department heads would like to comment. Carol, Dave?
Well, I, I really don't, we were in, we're gonna tell them about our Camel visit?
Sure.
Yeah. Our Camel, I mean, we're so excited, I mean, the three of us, that we could actually either go to the areas of which we are trying to help, uh, small communities or have them come down, whatever fits their schedules. Last night we went Camel. But we were in Camel and we presented, uh, Mayor Phillips with a, uh, seven hundred fifty thousand dollar, uh, check for the SOD and the re, revitalization of Twelfth Street. And as I said in Camel, that's probably one of the, the main corridors of Camel that really has not had a facelift for many, many years. So it's gonna be interesting, they're working with the Mahoney County C I C to see what fits for that, uh, revitalization of that corridor. And I'm kind of excited to see how that's gonna fit in. I mean, I see where Saint Lucy's, uh, has purple cat there now, I saw the big signs for purple cats. So that's, that's gonna be a great addition over there. And they have some neat restaurants we went to a couple months ago, we're in a really nice restaurant there and they have two nice restaurants. I do know they have a bakery. And Nancy, you could attest to this, down the street, there's a bakery, it's not open all the time.
Mary's.
But they make the best Koa Chi in town.
That's Mary's.
Is it Mary's?
Mary's.
Oh my god.
Yeah.
So, you never know, we're gonna have new places to go eat, buy bakery, bake, baked goods. So I'm excited.
Is that, is that A R P A?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would agree, you know, that, you know, it's really been, uh, an exciting time because we've had the opportunity to assist communities and projects that otherwise would not have been funded. And, you know, with, uh, Boardman, the ABC Water District, you know, to try and alleviate flooding problems in the county. And, you know, when, when the political subdivisions come up with a plan to assist their residents and it impacts those numbers of people, you know, we definitely want to take an opportunity to participate and assist to help the residents of Mahoney County because, you know, our job is to make sure that we fund projects that help the most people and give the biggest bang for our buck to make sure that the, that the majority of residents of Mahoney County or that a, a large majority of residents of Mahoney County are able to feel the impact of these projects. And, you know, the ABC Water District with Boardman and their water alleviation project is one. Uh, the Camel revitalization area is one. You know, it wasn't that long ago when Camel was in fiscal emergency, I think that, uh, they were having a lot of difficulty. So, uh, to be able to help one of our, you know, core cities in, in Mahoney County, when you talk about Youngstown, Camel, and Struthers and, you know, there, there, there's a lot of residents there that are impacted that really need us to be able to participate in projects that'll help the revitalization of their areas. You know, I grew up working in the Youngstown, cheating too, Camel Works. And remember going down Wilson Avenue, you know, eating at the Castle and going to the Twin Bridge and, you know, and all the areas that were booming, you know, when, you know, when there was red soot all over everybody's car, everybody was happy. You know, cause they were all working and the mills were running and flame. You know, you, you realize that at one time, we had seven integrated mills in the Youngstown, Camel, Struthers area. And today there is not seven integrated mills in the entire United States. You know, so the, the things that, that, you know, that are going on that we're able to participate in because of the American Rescue Plan funds has been a godsend for our county and for actually the United States be able to participate and assist, you know, in things that we know are necessary but don't meet the criteria for grants and for federal funding and state funding. So, um, it's, it was nice going to Camel yesterday to be able to, you know, to take another step forward in helping the other communities in the county, so.
You're right, and I agree with Carol and Dave, you know, one of the things that I've always said, charity begins at home. And with respect to the ARC funding, it allowed the Board of County Commissioners to plug these holes from projects that have been on the drawing board in many of these communities forever. And if you couldn't meet the local match, they couldn't find the funds to do it for whatever excuse the federal government would come with or the state would come up with, they just never could get enough money to follow through to complete the project. So, a board of three here, uh, we have looked, we have talked, we've had officials approach us. And we look at every project that, like Dave said, will give us the biggest bang for our buck and giving these dollars back, which is reinvested back into our community. Taxpayers can see where the money's going, it's been very transparent with a lot of these. And these communities are very happy, they're finally able to get their head a little bit above water and do some things for the residents. So we've been proud to do that and we're gonna continue to do that, uh, as we move on in the future.
You know, one, one thing I'd like to say too, and I apologize for coming back again, but, you know, I, I just wanted to say, um, you know, that, uh, my thoughts and prayers go out to, uh, you know, one of my, my wife's best friends. Um, she was in a terrible car accident around seventy-nine and, um, she graduated from Ursuline, uh, you know, my wife's got that group that all turned sixty last year and they all went to Florida. You know, there's four of them that, you know, we joke about them, you know, that they, you know, they're the Rat Pack, you know, from, from nineteen sixty. They turned sixty, they were born in nineteen sixty, you know, and, and, uh, her one girlfriend, uh, that was going to Pittsburgh Airport, was in a terrible car crash and she's fighting for her life today. So, you know, the life changes in the blink of an eye. And, you know, one day, you know, you're, you're with your friends tomorrow, uh, you're holding prayer vigils. Uh, so I just wanted to say, you know, keep Marilyn in your prayers and, you know, just remember that, you know, we get up this morning thinking we're gonna have dinner tonight, you know, and it doesn't always happen. So life changes so quickly, you know, make sure you take the time to, you know, to, to, you know, check to people and thank to people that mean the most to you because, you know, nothing's guaranteed, so.
Okay, Nancy, our next meeting? Okay. Motion? Motion to.
Wait, say one real quick thing, cause I, um, just to clarify some things for Ed. Um, the Commissioners last night went to Camel. They went to the mayor and the township, I mean, in the council ahead of time of the funds being act, acted, they're not on their agenda yet. It's to the C I C, um, for Camel and it will be on the Commissioner's agenda, agenda. But they wanted to, the mayor and council to work with C I C to develop the plan to come back so that they could get it on their agenda. So they surprised them last night and that's what happened.
We've got a couple of those going on.
The media.
They weren't there.
I mean, did anybody invite them?
I thought.
I mean, you probably left it up to Camel to do that.
Yeah.
Because they, it was to me, I mean, we have a reporter that covers Camel, but it looks like she didn't know anything.
Yeah, there was nobody there, but I just wanted you to aware that that's what they were, they're surprising them.
Surprising some of our communities. Um, I think.
We'll try to make sure that we get.
Struthers is kind of here, I think.
That other one with Valley Partners, is that additional million dollars from what you did the other day? Cause I didn't understand what.
It's, it's the grants, the other one was revolving loan and this is for a grant for the, up to ten thousand dollars per business.
And the criteria will be affixed to that, it's not just you can go in and get a grant, you're gonna have to qualify.
Okay.
Yeah.
That sounds similar to something they did before.
Yes.
Is it very similar to the, like, ten thousand dollars?
It's, yes.
Cause I did a story on West Side Bowl, they received one of those, I think.
That was CARES funds, I believe.
Yes, right. It's all in the same format, yes.
Similar to that. Okay.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Chafficanty?
Thank you.